Oh my goodness.
If you want to mute yourself and maybe try to redo your speakers, just hopefully you can help me with the slides. I'm surprised that no folks are putting any comments in. I just want to make sure people are actually in, in the program. So if people are in the program, can you raise your hand or write it? Oh, perfect. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, everybody. So, thank you. So while Sean works on that, let's start with our standard disclaimer. And then we'll flip over Sean to the session goals. Sorry, unfortunately, you've got control over the slides. So we'll have to torture you to stay there to, to deal with the slides. So tonight is super exciting. We are focused on our zoning board of appeals members here. Hopefully, most of the people who are on here are ZBA members. You have a very important role and we're looking forward to talking through your roles and responsibilities. We're going to talk about area variances. We're going to talk about use variances. We'll talk about the statutory test and all sorts of good stuff. The next one here, there's a difference between zoning and planning. And for those of you that sat through the planning board session, the planning board is really set up towards looking towards the future and working on planning towards the future. The ZBA's job is very focused on what the existing laws are. Your job's kind of hard because everybody that's coming to you is actually looking to do something different than what the law actually says. So in that way, your job is very different than looking forward on a planning side. So for the basics, if we can flip over, for the membership on the zoning board of appeals, you have ZBA's boards that are three-member boards, believe it or not, five-member boards, or even seven-member boards. And the ZBA members are actually appointed by the municipal board. And they can have three or five, and actually I've seen it with seven. You do have to have the training requirements for four hours, which I'm sure is a reason a lot of you folks are here is to make sure that you get your training requirements. And also as a ZBA member, you are also considered a public officer. And therefore, you're subject to the public officer's law, which means that you need to be 18, you need to be a US citizen. And most importantly, you must be a resident of the community that you're serving. And it needs to be in that community on appointment as well as throughout your term. So if you were appointed and then want to move to another municipality or move down south, you are no longer eligible to be a member of the ZBA. And most importantly, you have to file an oath of office, oath of office with your municipal clerk. And sometimes people forget to do that. If any of you that are listening here and you don't remember actually signing and filing your oath of office, please do that as soon as you can to make sure that you have done that because that makes you a full member of the ZBA. Believe it or not, there's cases out there because generally, nobody really thinks of that until you make a decision that someone doesn't like. And that's where all of a sudden it becomes an issue like, hey, that person hasn't filed their oath of office. The law actually says that your decisions are valid that you made, but you do want to make sure that you stay a member in good standing. So be sure to sign your oath of office. How are we doing, Sean? Were you able to redo? Let's see. Still no sound? Nope. Okay, well, I'll just keep going then. So on the next, the next slide for ethics and transparency. The, let's see. Actually, thanks, John, for, I flipped over that slide. So the zoning board of appeals can have alternate members. Not all municipalities have alternate members. Personally, I think it's a good idea to have alternate members because especially with, let's, if your board is only three people, if a couple of people can't make that meeting, you can't actually transact business. But to have an alternate, to be an alternate member of the board, that's a local law that the municipal board has to pass. And I'm seeing, I would say about half of the, half of the municipalities allow for alternate members. Because as I'm sure some of you folks are aware, it's hard to find people to serve. So not only are you asking someone to serve as a board member, you're trying to find someone that also is willing to participate as an alternate member. And an alternate member is a person that steps in in the event of a conflict of interest. And we'll talk about that a bit more on a later slide. But also if there's absent members such that there can't be a quorum in order to have actions. And I find it difficult for the poor alternate members where, let's say there's a controversial project that's been going on for two or three months. And then all of a sudden, you're called to duty to actually make a decision. So there really is a responsibility as an alternate member. If you are going to sit and make a decision as an active member, just to be sure that you're familiar with the actions, you're familiar with what has happened. And it doesn't mean that you had to have been at all of the meetings. But you will want to familiarize yourself with the meeting minutes. And if it's possible to listen to the videotape or watch, watch a video of the board meetings before you're called into action. Which again, that's why it's a, it's kind of a tough spot to be in as an alternate member because you're always just there, just in case. Kind of like an alternate on an Olympic team. You have to be there and ready to go. The other issue here, how can you be removed from the board? And you can't be removed from the board just because people, including the folks that put you on the board, don't like your decisions. And you need to be removed, what's called for cause. And it's a pretty high standard. And failure to attend meetings, inappropriate behavior, failure to do your training requirements, as well as ethics violations. But it's not a situation where it just says, okay, you're kicked off the board for cause. There really is an opportunity for you to be heard. And there has to be a public hearing. Personally, I've been doing this a long time. I have not been in a situation where there had, where we've had to lose a board member for cause. Notwithstanding the fact, there are situations where the elected officials are not happy with the ZBA. So just know that you have a very difficult job with applicants and you can have a difficult job on the folks that actually appointed you. But you really are an independent board and your job is to go through the criteria and set forth in the statutes. So next for ethics and transparency.
Can you hear me, Wendy, now?
Yes, I sure can.
Sorry about that. Sorry for everyone for that technical difficulty with my microphone. So, okay.
You recovered great. Nice job.
I recovered great. Thank you. Well, I'll let you finish this slide up and then I'll get into the remaining.
Okay, perfect. All right. This, this is my favorite Matt Horn slide, which I know the folks of you that have been on here with Matt and I for a number of years, he always uses the line, what I want my grandmother to read about this in tomorrow's paper. So it, it's, it's less of a rule than making sure that you're presenting yourself in a manner that it's okay if it's on the front page of the newspaper, if my parents sit and listen to what I'm saying about an application. And so that's always a good rule of thumb. As far as conflicts of interest, which it kind of goes a little bit with the other slide. If you want to not have even the appearance of a conflict, but just because something, for example, let's say there's an application and it's your neighbor. Now, you can put that on the record and say, hey, this is my neighbor. I can still be impartial. You don't have to recuse yourself. But if you've been going around, putting around a petition in opposition to the application, now that's a different level. Now you really should be recusing yourself from that decision. Also, kind of the, the hard line is if you're going to be financially benefited from a decision, that's obviously a conflict. One of the practical issues people ask me is like, well, I have a conflict, but can I just not vote? Really, I try to advise my boards, if you have a conflict, you really shouldn't be sitting at the table. You're, you're more than welcome to sit with the public because you're still a member of the public. But you really shouldn't be sitting at the table. So if you do have a conflict, my recommendation always just go take a seat. You can sit right in the front. You can participate like the public can in a public hearing. But you wouldn't want the perception that you're trying to sway any votes by sitting in that position of authority if you do have a conflict.
Yeah, and to your point, Wendy, you know, I, I've been in front of a lot of boards where there's been interest or, and so forth. And usually, a good chairman will, will pick up on, chairperson, yes. And will, you know, ask the question, you know, exactly to your point. But I, I've had one application where I was just blown away because I won't name many names, but the chairman, one of the chairpersons was a leasing of a solar project. So he was actually leasing out his land to a solar provider. And he still remained on the board. He didn't recuse himself, in which he had a significant financial interest. So just be careful when you see things like this. And don't be afraid to speak up, especially if you think it definitely has an interest. So.
Sean, it's interesting. I had a situation, this does come up in the solar projects and also in wind farms. And I had a small community, no surprise that one, one of the board members was likewise a leasing. And what he would do is he would take his fancy chair and put it in the public. But he did, he did go sit in the public, which I always thought was a very good idea. But he did take his more comfortable chair.
Yeah, and you know, before we get to the next slide, the, the one thing that kind of drives me a little crazy is, you know, when, when I'm at a ZBA board meeting and they're, they're going through the tests or for that area variance or a special use permit or a use variance, you know, they'll just say, I don't like the project. Okay? Or, you know, I, I don't think, you know, but they don't base it on any facts. So, you know, where you're basing a decision, a very big decision on emotions, I advise against that.
Yes.
So ZBA powers is the next slide. So, ZBA is a little different from that of a planning board. They, they do have, are granted two appellate functions. One of those functions are to review applications for the use in area variances. And the other power is to render interpretations on the zoning regulations, whether that is an interpretation from the code enforcement officer, which we'll get into a little bit further. But they are more or less the sounding board. And the zoning board of appeals can also be given original jurisdiction by the local governing board, whether that's the village board of trustees, the town board, or the city council. You know, for example, some communities, you know, there, there are several communities that do not have a planning board or vice versa, where they, they may carry the functions and so forth. You have anything you wanted to add to this slide, Wendy?
Nope. I love the last bullet that the process is very important. You know, this, because, because your jurisdiction is appellate, you are, you know, really hearing appeals and you're almost in a judicial role. So the process is very important.
So interpretations, you know, I can't stress this enough within codes. I deal with codes every day. And a lot of issues that I find are, a lot of codes lack definitions, which definitely leaves things up for interpretation. If they're not defined, it usually falls in the lap of the code enforcement officer who makes a, you know, determination whether, you know, if, if it's not defined and if, for example, a flex space building comes in. And if that's not defined, he's going to categorize that under another use, which is, you know, leaves it up for interpretation. Someone may have an imposing view of that decision. So, so interpretations, they may only be made upon appeal of enforcement officer's decision. Appellate believes enforcement officer wrongly applied the law. So for example, if I come in with an application to build, let's take a flex space, which is a kind of new trending use that you see all over the place. It's a, it, it almost looks like a storage facility with individual doors where people can, you know, operate their small business out of those. So if that is not defined in your code, then again, that leaves it up for interpretation. And if that is applied in the wrong way and is challenged, then that challenge goes before the zoning board of appeals. Common areas of interpretations are definitions, methods of taking measurements, ordinary meaning of terms if terms is undefined, as I just specified. So it's, it's very important if you are, if you, if you find yourself, for example, granting a lot of use variances, what we'll get into later, it might be a good idea to evaluate your zoning code. So before I move on, Wendy, do you want anything to add to that?
Nope. I will hit a little bit on interpretations when we talk about the process.
Okay. So the interpretation process, you want to jump on this one?
Sure, sure. Interpretations are, they're, they're really an interesting animal because a lot of times you disagree with what lots of people think. And this process is really set up mainly through your code enforcement officer. So the first thing you need to do is have your code enforcement officer put something down in order to appeal from it. And sometimes that's a little bit of a challenge because an enforcement officer doesn't always put their decision in writing. So, but that is, that's the first thing that needs to happen. And because, you know, from a code enforcement officer perspective, they give building permits, they issue certificates. You know, it's, it's not usually in their realm to give an interpretation. So that's always a little challenging from a legal side. Now, let's say, for example, an interpretation could be, he issued a building permit. So you don't think a building permit should have been issued. So that's where a lot of these will come in, you know, that the, it sounds weird that they're an interpretation, but the same process. So does the person have standing to challenge the issuance of that building permit? Well, if I live across, on the other side of the municipality and I just hate this person, I don't think I really have standing in order to say that. But if I'm a neighbor and I believe that my neighbor received a building permit for, let's say, for example, a deck that I think they should have had a variance for. They shouldn't, they shouldn't have gotten a building permit. That's where your standing comes in. The, you do have to have a public hearing. And this is one where you need to have evidence. It's a little bit different than a variance that is probably something that you're more used to. Because you have to have the evidence. And in this situation, you actually have two different people's evidence. You have the, the code enforcement officer saying, this is why I think a building permit should have been issued. Then you also get evidence from the person that's actually taking the appeal for the interpretation. And also the interesting thing for the ZBA is you actually step into the shoes of the code enforcement officer. So it's not really a balancing of the evidence. It's, it's, it's a situation where you say, you know, this is what, if I was the code enforcement officer, this is what should have been done. Now, the statute of limitations for this is dicey. And what statute of limitations means is what is the timing for that person to complain? So let's say a building permit is issued. The question is, when does that appeal have to be taken to your board? And it's usually either 30 days or 60 days. The state law has it at 60 days, but some local municipalities will make it 30 days. And that's another one that can be a little dicey is, let's say, a building permit is issued to your neighbor and you don't know that it's been issued. You have no notice of that. And you first become aware of it when that neighbor actually starts building the deck. There are situations where you can make the argument that you, you made that appeal within 30 days after you became aware of this situation. So there's a lot of, a lot of weird little legal issues with the interpretation process. So if you're faced with this, it's a good idea to get some assistance from legal because by definition, you have two, you have two competing situations. And not only do you have two competing situations, you are literally looking at an appeal of what I consider the most important, not the most important, the most powerful person in your municipality, which is your code enforcement officer. So, you know, if you're going to, you know, say that that code enforcement officer is making the wrong interpretation, that's kind of a big deal. So, so I, these, these are very important. You probably don't see a lot of them, but they are important.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, when, when applications are coming in, you're doing the application intake. You know, I've seen so many applications come before a board, which we'll get into completeness and incompleteness. But one thing that I really recommend to those code enforcement officers or billing officials who are taking in those applications that may require variances and so forth, it may be very beneficial to just have a simple form. And, you know, I, I, that form could be a zoning determination form. Now zoning determination form could specifically identify what sections of the code it's applicable to and what sections of the code it's not applicable to. And those non-applicable regulations may result in a variance, which would defer that to the ZBA. And usually those zoning determinations are given to the applicant. And it pretty much outlines, you know, what boards need, it needs to go to, planning board for site plan. It needs to go to ZBA for the area variance. It needs to go to Army Corps because there's a jurisdictional wetland. Or, you know, in DC for SWIP. So that's, that's a discussion for another time. But that's something that some of the municipalities would greatly benefit is having some kind of zoning determination as part of their intake process. So.
That's a great recommendation, Sean, because it, if, if you don't have that strong intake, it sometimes gets confusing when, for example, a planning board is saying, hey, you need a variance. You know, where really, you know, it, it kind of keeps everybody in their lane. So that, that's a great suggestion for your process.
Right. And before we get to the next slide, a prime example, and I just had this pop up last month, was one of my clients had an application come before them for a pretty straightforward building. There was, it was unlisted action under seeker. We did have to coordinate it out. But what was missed in the application intake process was one of the lots, because it was a site plan and it was a subdivision. So after the subdivision, one of, one of those lots would be non-conforming by lot width. And that didn't really get caught at the intake. So that went before the planning board. Then it was later discovered that a, a area variance would be required. And then it just, it delayed the process. It delayed the, the application. So I can't stress enough the importance of, you know, spending some time and looking into these applications and make sure that, one, they're complete and, two, we're not missing a board that it needs to go to. Okay. So going on to, obviously, most of the people on this session are probably ZBA members, code enforcement officers, and planning board members. But, you know, two things we hear mostly with are the use variance and the area variance. And they, they're very straightforward, but they're completely different. You, you may have heard the term, one, use variances, one too many. If you do hear that by your board or someone, then, you know, you, you might need to reevaluate your zoning regulations. So the use variance, to use land for the purpose not allowed by the zoning regulations. So what does that mean? So usually, within each district, you have permitted uses. You have non-permitted uses. You have specially permitted uses. So if that use is not listed as a permitted use, then, well, or a special use, it's going to require a use variance. And obviously, that goes to the ZBA for the four, four-pronged test, which we'll get into. And obviously, and the area variances, a little bit easier to get approvals for. And we'll get into this a little bit later, too. But it's exactly as it sounds. It pertains to setback requirements, height restrictions, lot cover maximums, and frontage requirements. So when, when we're granting variances, we, we want to grant the minimum variance necessary. And I can't stress that enough. So you have anything you want to add?
Nope, thanks.
So area variance, this little diagram here just kind of gives a typical residential lot there with a side, front, rear, and side setback. And the use variances use the land in a way that varies from dimensional requirements and zoning regulations. So for example, I'll, I'll take an example here. You know, a lot of communities, they're, they're, they're learning that times are changing. And some, you know, the, the one-acre lots are not desirable as they, they once were, or the five-acre lots. So a lot of the lots and housing stock types are, are changing. So, you know, with this being said, you really need to evaluate how many area variances that the ZBA are granting each board meeting. And it, for example, I have this one example when I was a town planner in New Hampshire, is that a gentleman built, built a accessory garage for his, to store his boat, and he had a loft for his grandchildren to play ping pong and games upstairs. Well, this town had a very, very strict overlay district, a watershed overlay district to this one pond. They were granted the area variance. I forget the number. Let's just say five. But when they surveyed it, the surveyor did it incorrectly and they built it within the approved setback. So he appealed that and went back to the ZBA and the ZBA denied it. So when they denied it, he was left with only a couple of options. Remove it. He wasn't going to remove it. So he, he literally cut off a foot and a half of the front of the building and re-sided it. So that's just a funny story. But the area variance, there are five questions associated with this. And, you know, the statutes contain five items which must be considered by the ZBA when deciding whether to grant an area variance. These five considerations are used to balance the benefit of, to the applicant of receiving the variance against the burden to the health, safety of the community. So when we're granting these, we, we got to be very mindful of, you know, who, who, who they're going to impact. And the, the, the big thing is, I've seen so many zoning board meetings where they don't even go through these five questions. And correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy, typically, a applications for area variances should provide these questions for the applicant to answer, to submit as part of the application to assist the board in rendering their decision. Because, because the, the board cannot approve hardship or they can't determine if it's substantial in nature and so forth. So it's very important when you're, when you're getting applications that these five questions are answered so the board can evaluate each one and have that dialogue with that applicant to make sure that, one, they're granting that variance in accord with the state statutes.
Or denying it.
Or denying it, yes. So, so, you know, so, you know, even though the air- area variance is not as stringent as the use variance, uh, it, it should be tr- it shouldn't be tre- treated lightly though. Um, you know, um, upholding the integrity of the zoning regulation is the, you know, the hands of the zoning board, uh, members. So, um, and usually the zoning, uh, the zoning code is in compliance with your comprehensive plan. So, you know, when you're making decisions on, you know, even side setbacks, those side setbacks sometimes are updated within your zoning code to adhere to your comprehensive plan. So, um, you know, don't take it lightly, um, when you're, when you're granting the, uh, some of these area variances. You, you really need to take a hard look, even if it's a shed, um, um, in someone's, uh, rear backyard.
Agreed.
So, uh, this is just kind of, uh, you know, the difference, uh, between the two. Uh, so the use variance, uh, which we just kind of went over, um, obviously are for those uses that are prohibited in, in your zoning code. Um, a lot, a lot of municipalities are, are finding that, you know, what was, uh, um, not permitted or prohibited or not defined, uh, um, you know, they're, they're defining them and they're updating their code to be a permitted use or a special use permit, um, that requires conditions, which we, we'll get into a little bit further. Um, and, uh, again, uh, there's statutory tests associated with, uh, the use variance. Um, and, uh, or here we have the special, uh, use permit. Again, we'll, we'll get into that, um, with some, uh, examples as well. How are we doing on time here?
We're doing good. We can go right into the use variance test.
Sure, sure. Uh, do you want to take this one, Wendy, or?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
So, um, we went through the area variance test and I like to call that a balancing test where, um, you really need to balance the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment, um, to the community and the neighborhood. And, and you look at those factors. Now, the use variance test is completely different. The use variance test is there's four factors that need to be proven to you as the zoning board of appeals by the applicant in order to justify a use variance. And they're hard. They're intended to be hard factors because in essence you're allowing a use that is prohibited, um, by the zoning code. So the first one is that the applicant can't realize a reasonable return, but they're supposed to provide you with financial evidence. And, and what that part of the test means is what the applicant has to do is to go through every single permitted use and show why that is not economically viable. Um, and their proposed use, which isn't allowed, is the only one that has a reasonable rate of return. The second one, that the hardship needs to be unique. So it can't be something that, you know, someone says, well, it's just inappropriately zoned. Well, if an area is inappropriately zoned, then really we should, what, what the applicant and the municipality should be looking at is actually addressing this by the municipal, um, level by amending the zoning code. Number three, um, whether a use variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It's a very subjective one. That's the most subjective one in this test. And then the last one is whether or not the hardship is self-created. And it is pretty much black letter law, meaning that it's just a rule that if you own the property, if you buy the property and this limitation is there, it's self-created because you purchased the property knowing that, that use that you're trying to use it for is prohibited. So when, when I'm going through the test with the board, I always like to start with number four because if, if the applicant can't, can't get past that hurdle, there's no sense, you know, wasting everybody's time and effort on the other ones. So the, there are municipalities that give out use variances, um, you know, and their process is really set up specifically that, that they like using a use variance as a relief valve. And if you're one of those municipalities where you're seeing that you're giving out a lot of use variances, it really means that you should look at the code because whatever, whatever you're allowing might be better off just being allowed by the code. And you can handle that through an amendment by having a local law amendment to your zoning code. And just a, a little footnote on amending your zoning code. I sometimes see municipalities looking for perfection to fix everything in their code. You know, you can just fix little components and, you know, not have to do, you know, soup to nuts on that. And sometimes if you see yourself dealing with a lot of use variances, that, that implies that you might want to look at fixing it from a zoning code side.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. The two things I want to add is that, um, you know, with, uh, you know, if, if, if you're in the process of updating your zoning code because you're, you are granting too many use variances, you find that you, you're lacking definitions. Um, you know, i- i- it's important to, and don't be afraid to have too many definitions. That, that takes a lot of the burden off the code enforcement officer in regards to leaving him up to interpreting the code. Um, and Wendy makes a great point, um, in regards to the test, in, in regards to looking at, uh, factor number four first. Um, I, you know, one, one quick, uh, example to that was one municipality, um, they, uh, had a five acre, uh, lot minimum for, uh, small livestock. And, um, the applicant purchased the property. Um, however, the lot was 4.8 acres, just under that five acre threshold. So with the board knowing that, um, they, they asked this question that the alleged hardship has not been self-created. Well, them knowing that they purchased the property, you know, they kind of created that hardship. So.
And Sean, just a, a couple of points on that because you're, you, you, you tickled into my, my favorite issue on variances. Um, is that really a use variance because the size of the lot is too small? Or is it an area variance because the li- size of the lot is too small? Um, so I, it's, it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, and, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that because each time they're different, but that is in, in one, that's, that's an issue that really it's up to the code enforcement officer to decide whether, whi- which it would go. And, you know, usually the rule of law would go, that is a use variance, but, but that is, uh, obviously something that I'd like to delve into a bit.
But another part of that was, yes, they were identifying that they wanted to use it for chickens and, 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 uh, pigs and so forth. But they didn't really disclose the, the, that they wanted, uh, multiple horses. And by, by having that, that triggered that into a different, uh, use category.
Wow. Um, one other, we, we, we do have, um, just one question I want to hit before we flip into special use permits. Um, the laws that, um, Sean and I are talking about for the use variance test and the area variance test, those are in, um, state law. So for example, if you're in a city, that will be in the general city law. If you're in a town, it'll be in the general town law. So it's not, your local municipality may not have these tests specifically set out and they might refer you back to the state law just because this is a higher level. So, um, someone was asking about making sure that these tests are in their local code. It's possible that they're not and it might refer you back to the actual state legislation that will be applicable, applicable to you.
Yeah. And, and for example, if you do not have them, uh, outlined in your, uh, code, um, what you could, um, do as well as, as part of the, uh, zoning board application, you could just take, uh, the area variance, uh, uh, five questions and the use variance, the four questions and put them in part of the, uh, the, the application for them to answer.
Yep, exactly.
Alrighty, um, about, so special use permits, uh, w- we are, um, we'll, we'll, we'll try to move along because we, we do have, uh, a fun exercise here at the end. So for those, uh, uses, uh, special use permits, special use permits are one of my favorite things. Is for one of those, uh, items that the board, um, wants a little bit control over, um, that may have caused issues in the past. Um, now special use permits, they're permitted by right. However, they're permitted by right with, um, you know, the, the, the ZBA having some say in that matter. And, um, um, and with that, um, boards are allowed to revoke special use permits if they're not adhering to the conditions of approval or those standards outlined within the, uh, standards of the zoning code. So, um, but if there, um, the, the, if the special use permit requirements are met, the application should typically be granted. I, I don't really see too many special use permits, uh, being denied. Um, but, uh, they do, I, I, the boards do kind of, uh, crack down, um, in regards to, uh, setting, um, conditions and so forth. And again, um, a special use permit, which I see a lot lately would be with, um, short-term rentals. So if, uh, you see a lot of short-term rentals in your community and it's not defined, it's not in your code, um, you, you know, you, you don't want to go in your code and if they're, especially if they're creating headaches in regards to parking, trash, noise and so forth, you don't want to go in and just throw it in your code as a permitted, uh, permitted by right. You're want, you're, you're going to want to put that in there to have, uh, as a special use permit. So you have some, uh, flexibility on what, how that project is on a case-by-case basis. So. And, uh, the, the, the last bullet here, um, if the reviewing agency wishes to waive one or more of the review criterias or standards, um, um, they, they do have the authority to, to waive some of those standards within reason, which would be, for example, um, if a use comes in and it requires X number of parking spots, however, they're short, uh, one or two parking spots, um, the board may have the ability to waive those requirements. Anything else, um, Wendy?
Nope, I think we're good.
All right, ZBA process. So.
So I'm going to take that and run it, run it kind of through because we got about fifteen minutes and there's some big things I want to be sure to have some fun to hit.
Okay.
So, um, obviously zoning board of appeals meetings are subject to the open meetings law. And what that means is that your meeting is open to the public. The public gets to see you deliberate, see you do your work. You need to tell them when you're meeting, where you're meeting and allow them to watch you do your job. Now, ZBA is a little bit different because just about everything that you do, you need to hold a public hearing, which is kind of unique. Not all boards have that obligation. So my experience with ZBAs is you, you guys know how to run a good meeting and you know how to run a good public hearing because you're comfortable in that arena. But once that public hearing is closed, you don't have to allow the public to speak. And kind of pulling in a bunch of slides here, um, just for some kind of tips on meetings and public hearings, during the public hearing, that is the public's opportunity to speak to you, to give you their opinions. It's not the job to ask you questions. It's not the job necessarily to ask the applicant questions unless you're, you want to allow that. It's for the public to give you their comments. Once you close that public hearing, the applicant can still speak to you and the board can still speak and have a conversation about the application because you never want to forget that you're the decision maker in, in the, the process. Question on quorum actually was, um, popped up early on. Let's say you have a five, your, your ZBA is supposed to have five members, but you four, you only have four people that have actually been appointed. A quorum is still three, which is the majority of a fully constituted board. So if, if you're at a five-member board, you need to have three people for a quorum and you need to have three people to act, um, just because these boards are kind of so small. Um, for a three-member board, you would have to have two for a quorum and that you would have to have two to act. For executive sessions, exec- I have, I have actually had to field the question, you know, can we go into executive session and, and actually talk about the application and decide on how we want to vote? And you can't. I mean, I'm sure everybody would love to, you know, to really do your deliberation in, in private so that you're not hurting people's feelings or getting yelled at or getting scowled at. Um, but, but your job is really to, to do that deliberation out in the open meeting and that's covered by the open meetings law. You can have an executive session, generally speaking, the way that I see them with, with the boards I'm dealing with is, is if there's litigation. You know, that, that's a reason, but you're not going to be going into executive session or figure out how you're voting for purposes of that litigation.
Right. And one, one last, uh, thing on a quorum, um, that I see, uh, quite a lot is, um, uh, if there's an application before ZBA or a planning board, uh, take a cell tower or, um, for example, um, you know, applicant may, uh, go out there, fly a balloon to, you know, show the height to, when they're doing a simulation or so forth. And I've, I've had board, uh, the board members say, well, let's meet out there when they're doing the, uh, when they're flying the balloons so we can get a, uh, idea of how high it's going to be. Well, you're meeting as a board and that's, that's a quorum. So you gotta be really, really careful, um, on, on, on things like that. Or if you want to go out and look at a site as a group, you can't do that because you're, you're required to have a public hearing.
But, but also though, Sean, um, what, what they could do is just say, we are going to have the meeting in this field and you're welcome to come and watch it. So, so you, you, you can go that way as well because, you know, it, it is, it is subject to the open meetings law. So as long as the public can go and observe, just like the board can.
Right. But you also got to be careful if it is in a field, you gotta, you also look at, uh, accessibility issues and, and so forth. And so, um, moving on, um, so.
Why don't you flip to the slide on decisions, um, because we got about ten minutes. We want to make sure the mo- one of the most important. Um.
There you go.
Right there. Okay. There's nothing more important than actually writing up your decision and the basis for your decision. Again, you're on the appellate level. Um, one other item, um, Sean, we probably should point out a little bit more clearly. You, because you're appellate, um, you really should have a denial in some fashion from the code enforcement officer. So just like Sean was saying, as far as the application intake, when, when someone needs a variance, technically they're, they're denying their building permit because they need this variance. So part of your decision, when it, when the documentation is put together, you really should be a piece of paper that you're pointing in the file to say, well, this is how it came to us because the code enforcement officer decided a variance was needed or a permit was denied. And then the decision really should go through each of the criteria that Sean and I talked about for the area variance, for the zone, for the use variance or the interpretation to show in the record that you went through each of that criteria. So that's why the, the most important, it, your decision needs to be based on the record. You can't just say, hey, I make a motion. I, I like this person. I, I'm going to grant the approval. Make sure that you've got something in the record. Some people do it through the meeting minutes. I personally like written resolutions, um, but, you know, as long as, as long as you have the, the justification in your meeting and it's, that's it, that you really need to show your work, a- as they used to say in math class. Technically, your decision is supposed to be made within sixty-two days after hearing is closed. Now, the most important thing that I'm going to give everybody here, a job to go and check your law. You have to find out if there's in your local law, what's called a default approval. And what that means is if you don't act within sixty-two days, it's automatically approved. Now that's unusual, but it's terrible, terrible. And if, if you do have that in your local law, bring it to the attention of your attorney immediately. Um, because sometimes those sneak in there, the local laws, folks thinking that that is going to help a municipality to force you to make a decision, but it's never good. You, you don't, you don't want someone to be able to point to a, a piece of paper and say that their project should be approved without you doing the, um, go, going through the process. It is a good idea if you're not making a decision within sixty-two days to, to get an extension from the applicant. But if they don't give it to you, then just say, great, it's denied because we can't make a decision. Um, so that sixty-two days is, is important, but it's not, it's not necessarily a death knell to you. Um, another item on that sixty-two days, if you know it's going to be a situation where it's a controversial project, you may want to wait to close that public hearing until you're really ready and you've received all the information that you need because then you might even start the sixty-two days. Sean, you got anything before I go into my favorite two slides of the entire night?
Yeah, um, other than, other than, yeah, I think you touched on it, uh, well, is that what I, I what I, what I see is that a lot of boards prematurely close the public hearing before even tackling seeker and so forth, or some other matters. So, yeah, I, there, there's nothing wrong with keeping that public hearing open. So, you know, you, if you're unsure, just, just leave it open.
Yep.
So.
Okay. So this is a case law that kind of came up within the last decade that now has made it into law, but I want to kind of walk, walk through this. The, for your board to act on an application, you need to have the majority of a full board. That's why I kind of showed my fingers on there. So if you're a five-member board, you need to have three members of your board to agree to either approve something or deny it. In other words, for your board to take action, you need a majority of the full board. Sometimes that doesn't happen. You know, let's say, for example, it's, it's a five-member board, but there's really only four people on the board, because there, there's one vacancy, and you keep, and you got to vote a two to two. Well, what happens? And until these cases came down, nobody knew what happened. And, you know, when, when, in the lawyer's world, and in my world, if nobody knows what to do, you can't get to a judge in order to find out whether someone's doing something wrong. So this process was put in place such that you have 62 days to come up with a decision. And that's, this is where that 62 days actually becomes important. So you close the public hearing, you have a vote, and it's two to two. Well, that's, there's nothing. It's not an approval, it's not a denial. It's a, it's a split vote on two to two. So what do you do? You come back to the next, the meeting again, you do another vote. It's still two to two. You do this for 62 days from the close of your public hearing, and then it's called a default denial, which is different than that default approval that I just talked about. And the reason that that's important, there needs to be an end date, is because that allows that applicant to go to a judge to say, hey, this thing shouldn't be, this shouldn't be denied. So, so that's the whole purpose that you have, that end period after 62 days. Now, you may have a board that says, we're not doing a re-vote. We already know, everybody's two to two, I'm not, we're, we're not going to try this again. You're just going to have to wait out the 62 days, and then the applicant can go to court and challenge that default denial. And also on this one, let's say you're two to two. You can, you can swap those votes, just because you voted against it on one meeting, you can change your vote for the next meeting, so you're not locked with whatever vote you put in the first one. So this is a really unique situation that, you know, it's kind of, it's, it's a bit of a do-over. You're going, you go in the next meeting, and then the vote starts again. So make sure that you're, you're aware of that procedure if you see yourself in that situation. And it actually, for the ZBAs that are only three people, tho- those are challenging. You know, just to have three people on a board, you really need to have two people to perform, and you need to have two people in favor or denial of application. So I, I see for the folks that have those smaller member boards that, that this type of situation can arise. Sean, you got any? Have you had, have you, have you had to deal with this experience at all in real life?
On, on a couple of occasions, I've dealt with split boards. And it, it, exactly what you said, it kind of, everything stopped. And it was, it, it was deferred, obviously, to the municipal attorney for consultation. But yeah, although, like you mentioned, it, it doesn't happen all that often, but, but it does happen.
And, and also, the interesting thing is, there's a clear process. The law is very clear what happens with the ZBA. The law's not clear on the planning board yet, because there hasn't been any litigation on it. So if it happens at the planning board, there's still not a clear path that it would automatically turn into a default denial. I do want to answer one question that popped up. Is seeker required for variances? Yes, seeker is required for every discretionary action, but a lot of the work that a ZBA does is considered a type-two action, which means that you don't, that it's already been decided that there's not an environmental impact. So all of your setback variances or variances associated with your residential, one, two, and three family houses and some other ones, are fit into that, that type-two category. So a lot of times, the ZBA is not, not as actively involved in seeker. And if there is a seeker that's required, a lot of times the planning board will take the lead on that.
Right.
The slide before, we, we, because I'm almost out of time. So rehearing process, this is another fascinating process. And probably some of you ZBA members have dealt with this or been pushed into this. This is where you get a complete redo, where it's either an approval or a denial, usually a denial. And all of a sudden, someone says, oh, we didn't mean to deny this, we want to do it again. There's actually a process for a redo, which is fascinating. But it needs to be a unanimous vote to do the rehearing, but it's a unanimous vote of the board members that are present, not a quorum. The board members that are present. You have to follow the same notice provisions, you need to have a public hearing, it really is a redo. But if you're going to change the vote, you need a unanimous vote of those present to change it. So with this situation, from my perspective, this is, let's say you have a board member that is adamantly opposed to a project, and is just like, I'm not even going to go to the meetings. There's a manipulation that can happen with this rehearing process, because it does have to be unanimous. So again, this is another fascinating little process that's out there. You can't prejudice the rights of people who have acted, and that would be if you're changing your approval to a denial. Those are, those are much more dicey to deal with, and you'll definitely want to deal with your attorney on that. Sean, you get the last word? We're just at seven.
Okay, the, the last one I just want to touch on is referral to your county planning board agency. So these are the typical scenarios of when an application needs to be referred, under 239. And, you know, typically, it's applications within 500 feet of municipal boundaries, state or county parks, state, county streams, institutions. But there's, there's a lot other categories that would trigger a county referral. So, and there are some municipalities that have exemptions. You can have exemptions that doesn't require an application to be submitted to the, the county. Let's see here. We kind of went through that.
I think we're almost, we're just about out of time, but all those slides are available. Some of these items, we hit on other ones in next month.
Just really quick, Wendy, we, we do have a lot of questions. And so what I will do, I, I'll take all these questions, I will answer them and include them as part of the slide deck when posted to the, to our website.
Sounds good. And next, next month, we were talking about solar and battery storage, so hopefully folks will join us again. Thanks, everybody. Hopefully you're staying cool and enjoying the summer.
Thank you for the time. And again, training certificates will be sent out this coming Monday. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me or Eric Hankin. So I appreciate your time, and please join us for session seven.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.